.....................
Are you ready for this one? This one is called Kung Fu. Kick them out! Who said bad word on enter position? Kick them out! All that disturb your life? Kick them out! Your friends and relatives and successors? Kick them and give them Kung Fu, let's go! Are you ready? Hope you... I do like this one, it's sweet case, sweet case! Let go! Now what, Kung Fu, let go! Give up Kung Fu!
I like it.
Give up Kung Fu! You can't defend who I don't like here! Give up Kung Fu! Give up Kung Fu! Give up Kung Fu! If your friends and relatives and successors are... Give up Kung Fu! Osha Kaba, Osha Koko, Olo Meli, Ema Taba, La Keneema, Ile Wepa, Nkoma Raya, Ile Soe Wepa, Ese Sabigata, Lama Fanyu, Give up Kung Fu! Manai Si, Sweet Case, Lama Chiku, Rapi Lord, I love you too, you don't like me, I hate you too, to love me, I love you too, Rapi Lord, I love you too, now who be you, Rapi who? Give up Kung Fu to Mr. Andisa! If your relatives and successors want to tell me, for what reason? Kung Fu! Give up Kung Fu! I say Kung Fu! I'm gonna warn the relatives and successors, not say Kung Fu! Give up Kung Fu! Oh yeah, Kung Fu! You can't defend who I don't like here! Give up Kung Fu! Rapi Lord, Kung Fu! Kung Fu! Kung Fu! Let go! Kung Fu! Rapi Lord! Okay! Rapi Lord! Rapi Lord!
Oh, Kung Fu, yeah, yeah!
Oh yes, you're kidding! Oh yeah, you're kidding! Okay! Are you ready? Let go! I'm gonna say, Osha! Osha Re! What do you want, say, Kung Fu? Oh, if we make it, oh, I'm gonna play it, I wanna start with that way! Hey, you will do, Karaku, from the place, I'm gonna do, Rapi Kung Fu, why you fool? What a fight, what a cool! I'm gonna respond as soon! Rapi Lord, see! What do you want, like?
Osha Muni, Osha Nada!
Osha Nada! Osha Nada! Let go! Osha Maneja, Osha Bush! Osha Prokisa, Osha Boom! Osha Manchester, Osha London! Listen! Osha DJ, Osha Blaze! Kung Fu! Let go! Kung Fu! Let go! Kung Fu! That was spicy! Okay! Yes! Kung Fu! First of all, I see you today. It's Kung Fu! Okay! Manchester! Thank you very, very much! Really thank you!
A A C?
Take it back!
A A C?
Take it back!
Take it back?
Asha!
Did you see the action there?
Yes!
That's what I'm talking about!
Yes!
That is what I'm talking about! We are taking it back by force! Twenty nineteen is a year with a difference! Not gonna see the analog people anymore, we're going to see the digital age taking Nigeria by force! Something different! A A C?
Take it back!
A A C?
Take it back!
Take it back?
Asha!
Yes! Okay, you guys are getting warmed up. Ladies and gentlemen, please, 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 I have given you all pieces of paper and pens. Please can you, you haven't got paper? Okay, if you haven't got paper, please can you put your hand up, so they can get some to you? If you haven't got any paper or a pen, please put your hands up, so they can get it to you. Please can you get some, people over here, some pens and paper? And if you've already got your question, can you just hold it up, please, and they'll collect them for you, please? If you've already written out your question, please hold them up, and they'll be collected for you. Please. Ladies and gentlemen, have you got these questions? I'm sure you've got more questions than this, they're burning questions that you've had. This is your opportunity now, to get these burning questions answered by the man himself, who will be in the office of the President of Nigeria in twenty nineteen. A A C?
Take it back!
A A C?
Take it back!
Take it back?
Asha!
Okay, so get these papers up in the air, please? And if you haven't got one piece, it's goodbye, I will give one to you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like you all, please... While we're getting that done? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, please, I would love you all to please stand up, as we welcome the man himself. The man who is going to break down all the barriers that we've experienced in the last fifty-eight years. The man who's going to make a difference in Nigerian politics. The man who's gonna make Nigeria be seen in a different light than it's always been seen around the world. A man who's gonna give Nigeria back the respect that they deserve. A man who's gonna change our lives and all the lives of people in Nigeria. I'd love it all to please give a warm A A C welcome to the future presidential candidate for two thousand and nineteen, Mr. Omoyere Shoré.
A A C! Take it back! Asha! Take it back! Asha! Isama! Shoré Isama! Shoré! Shoré! Shoré Isama! Shoré Isama! Shoré! Shoré! Shoré Isama! Shoré Isama! Shoré Isama! Shoré! Shoré! Shoré Isama! Take it back! Asha! Take it back! Asha!
Thank you everybody, thank you, please, I will say it one more time. I, uh... Most easiest opportunity at the time, the organizers, they have organized one day. Here in Manchester. They, the organizers, uh, saw to national, to be at this event, which are everything they can, uh, to make me be at this place at this time. I was supposed to have arrived yesterday, but for some technical reasons, my passport did not arrive to me on time, so I missed the flight last night, and thought on the plane, to be here, this is what on my way to this place. This, by this morning, the earliest flight that I could have been here would have been ten p.m. your time, so we were all apprehensive, and I began to attend, nobody relaxed. So, but for some reason, they were able to find me on last spot, on the digital airways flight to Manchester from, uh, Italy tonight, that took me here, and I think we are here at the right time now. So, please give them a round of applause for how they did this. Like, you know, there's so many people involved, but City of A Y is, uh, relentless. You've been saying that this is his hometown, and you can't go anywhere except to get here. Uh, we call a double, who comes, uh, came with us from the beginning of, uh, when we started as, uh, uh, the movement, which is a taking back movement called the political party, uh, two months ago. And the rest of you who have made this possible, and those who attended, doing behind everything they've done, it's probably night, to be here, thank you so much for coming. Uh, I came here not to give a long speech, because I found out, just as I was on my way here, that I've answered, I've been asked over five thousand questions. And I've answered over five thousand, I've given over five thousand answers. Pretty much, within eight months that we've done it, we've been asked every question pertaining to how to fix Nigeria, given a direct, correct, accurate, lacune and precise answer to them. And nobody has been able to fault it, to the extent that we're the first of, in the history of Nigeria, to have been everywhere where you can find Nigerians. Both at home and abroad, we've been to thirty states inside of Nigeria, thirty states, and visited over seventy places inside of Nigeria in the last eight months.
A A C! Take it back! Asha! Take it back! Asha!
So, also outside of Nigeria, we've done almost seventy events as well, outside of Nigeria. And, I mean, if you are running for presidency of Nigeria, and you find yourself in Australia, you know it's a serious matter. I'm not gonna do that, find myself in Australia. For the first time, I was fed with Tangaroos meat, in Australia, and, I mean, it tastes very good, I tell you that. And, we did four cities in Australia, about two weeks ago. And then head back, you know, we headed back to Nigeria, and done several events, several events, done TV shows, done radio shows. On a regular basis, we also, uh, had to attend to our own shows, we do regular live streaming on Facebook, A Y does it on, we have a number of persons, uh, out there, because we do not have the kind of resource and the contacts and the leverage, uh, to the two other major candidates have within the mainstream media. One of the candidates, uh, who has made a habit of rooting Nigeria, shipped over four hundred to Dubai a few weeks ago, just so that he can plan how to make Nigeria become a powerhouse for teams. That was all he went to plan in Dubai. And, uh, the other one, who is lifeless, is also allocated over one to two billion dollars already, for this election. And so far, we haven't even raised up to two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, GoFundMe is still on up to two, a hundred thousand, uh, dollars. Uh, our local account is still moving around taxing it on, uh, but we have been able to reach everywhere in a way that is surprising to them. They don't know how we are doing it. Uh, they asked, not, they didn't ask, at the beginning they said, "Well, these guys are from the heart of steel, they don't take long, someone predicted two weeks." Uh, after that, they said, "Okay, we know that, uh, you are serious, no one present us with the manifesto." We presented the manifesto, they asked ten point agenda, we asked to bring Nigeria back to life, because Nigeria is part of a debt, ladies and gentlemen. And they can't fault it. After that, they said, "Okay, go and bring us a political party." Of course, while we were looking for political parties, they went and bought all the political parties that were talking to the P D P, bought all the political parties that were talking to me, to what they call COP, C U B P, you know, what they call COP of SARS. Yes. And the moment they discovered that we couldn't, they couldn't trap us within that system, nobody has ever heard about COP, ever since then. They paid an average of fifteen million naira each to everybody who drank COP, according to old hell. This is money that is stolen from Nigeria, right? After that didn't happen, they invited us to come and join a group known as PACT, which is presidential aspirants coming together. And God, they are told them that you don't need presidential aspirants coming together, you need presidential candidates coming together. They got upset, we left, that also did not, uh, trap us. They tried everything possible they can. And then eventually, we had, and got a political party, uh, a political party registered. The moment we get out with the party, they started complaining about the logo, that it was not well designed, as far as we are concerned. When they got over the logo, they start asking us if we have structure, anywhere. And we kept telling them that, "Tell us the structure of P D P, anywhere." Nobody could show us P D P structures, because they don't have any structures. Tell us the structure of A P C. Nobody could show us. They have athletes for political elections. They have people athletes for buying elections. They have really athletes for pressing, harassing and intimidating people. They use, you know, public schools to rig elections. They use motor parks to, you know, assassinate and kill people. And, when we're able to prove that they have no structure, they now start accusing us of having no experience. And we broke it down to them, but, "Tell us the experience that Artigo had in nineteen ninety-two, when he ran for the presidency for the first time, he was forty-two years old, with no degree of any designable nature." So, what about Buhari, when Buhari came for the first time in nineteen eighty-two? He was forty-two or forty-five years old. So, which experience did you, did he, did this guy have? Nobody could defend that. Everest, I'm telling you all of this because we've been through all of emotions, and everybody now has come to a position where truth has become self-evidence. And, finally, everybody is discussing, so, it's looking likely that these guys are serious, and it is looking likely that they can win this election. It is looking likely that they can debate, you know, at the time, and I'm breaking this down to you, not to complicate the long speech. At the time, they even started challenging us, they said, "Oh, you know, there are no candidates, uh, you know, one of them is an intellectual, and he can speak English very well, so where is two streets smart, you know?" And then, one day, he pushed, he won the sale of a smartest to us on TV, T V C. By the time he was very disoriented, they said, "Oh, maybe Shoré has something else there still, you know?" It is just to tell you that, we have been there all around. On the street, we are the most popular in Nigeria, there's no question about it. On radio, nobody can match our ideas. On television, we also look sometimes very telegenics, right? And now, the questions keep coming. Now, the country finally is ready to come to terms with the future of possibilities.
A A C?
Take it back!
A A C?
Take it back!
A A C?
Take it back!
Take it back!
Asha!
And these possibilities are things that we're able to make possible from here. And other Nigerians are making them possible from wherever they are. Uh, I met someone on the plane today, who told me that, oh, he came from California, he's also living in Monaco for two years. Said, "I just drove from Benin to Assaba, and I saw your posters, all the way to, from Benin to Assaba." And we didn't, we did not have enough posters to even cover windows, I don't know how they got posters in Assaba. But it turns out that people are printing posters on their own. We just send them a G P A, you know, basho, and they're printing posters and masks, and posting posters everywhere they can find. People are doing grassroots mobilization, they are going to houses, churches, schools, they're going to town hall meetings. Traditional rulers are holding meetings in their kingdom on the same roof, "If you don't vote for this guy, you know, I'm gonna toss you out," on some basis, yes. Uh, I would not encourage that, but the most powerful ones are those of you abroad, who are telling you, people are telling you, "If you don't change Nigeria, I'm not sending money to you anymore." And that is sinking in for a lot of people, you know, we read them on the internet, "Ah, what did you tell my brother, I said, you know, we'll send money and put off people, you know?" Well, the thing is that, we can keep our money to our own vacation we can, we can use them to do other things. But Nigeria has been so destroyed that, without your influence, Nigeria's family would not be in existence today. The country of Nigeria, ladies and gentlemen, this might sound very terrible news to you, it is a country that has failed, or pretty good. Nigeria is a failed state. That is the truth, and that is a hard reality. And assert, we assert that, as the prevailing truth. Okay.
Yes. So, assert, we assert that reality.
Thank you.
Yes. We wouldn't be able to fix the problem.
Thank you.
And, it will start, for those of you who don't travel too deeply to Nigeria, or traveling to Nigeria, it starts from the airport, right? There is no airport that I have been to in the course of traveling around in recent times, that is as terrible as Nigerian airports. None! And I mean, we've been to a lot of African countries in the course of doing this campaign. I saw somewhere yesterday, even Rwanda now has a digitalized border between Rwanda and the Congo. You have to do fingerprints to get across the border. Nigeria, Nigeria cannot boast of a highway between Benar Republic and Lagos, but I agree. It's the worst. If you go to our schools, ah, you don't want to think about it. Last week, I went on a train ride in Lagos. Probably you guys have seen some of the video footage from that. You cannot transport pigs. No, I'm serious. If you transport pigs in those trains, the animal rights people will shut it down. The windows are blown out completely. The thing is, very, very hot, dingy and muggy. But there are thousands of people who are traveling in those trains. In fact, the guys who we met at the Yaba said, "Oh, if you are come to Ijoko", which is the commencement of the train ride, that you wouldn't have found space, because people have to stay on top of the train as well. When inside this build-up, then people sit on top of the train in Lagos, to move from point A to B.
A A C? Take it back! Take it back! Asha! A A C? Take it back! Take it back! Asha!
So, to fix this, our party, the African National Congress, is introduced, has introduced ten point agenda, you know, I don't want to call it an agenda, because that's something you are used to from the old yards or the old cargoes. But this is our digital response to bring Nigeria on par with other countries around the world, to bring Nigeria and move it in the path of direction and direction of prosperity, progress and peace. And we call it Spicer Hits. Now, that is to say for Nigeria to even start moving in any direction at all. Nigerians must feel safe within Nigeria, so, security is our number one priority. Because nobody is safe in Nigeria right now. Number two, power, electricity. Number two, I mean, three, infrastructure. Fighting corruption, anti-corruption. E, there, which is the Spicer, is economy. R is restructuring. H is health, education is E, air, culture and tourism. These things are things we are going to do at the same time, for Nigeria to reach that space, where all of you can start thinking about having your next vacation in Nigeria, start from next year, where we take it.
A A C! Take it back! A A C! Take it back! A A C! Take it back! Take it back! Asha!
So, what am I telling you, is that we are ready. We came ready for this even before we got the political party. In fact, we are so ready, that if we have our way, we will encourage them to just hand over power to us, like start fixing the country before the elections, right? But there's just no constitutional framework for that. But we can win this election very early, if we can encourage a lot of our competitors across the world, to help support our dream, to help support our aspirations for a better Nigeria, uh, to help us pull Nigeria out of oblivion, into a nation-state that can make the partner, I'm sorry, that can make the black man proud once again. Uh, having said that, I have a lot of questions here. And, uh, with your permission, I can start to deal with some of them, not all of it, because we have plenty of questions here. Uh, but I, I will make some attempt at answering some of the questions, yes. Maybe I'll start with the last one that just came. Uh, and this one is about, "The most local government said it's big and huge, especially in the three estates, would love for you to come and engage with them, is Abesong, Gowan and Shagary Estate." Absolutely, that's not the question, it's a suggestion, it's well taken, I'll put suggestion on this side. Uh, I'd like to share a strategy to change the status of GoFundMe, of the GoFundMe figure, okay? That's a suggestion. "How do we get the mainstream television to talk more about your candidacy? How impossible is it to organize a two-million-man march initiative zone? We need to get commits to updating our social media, uh, profiles with Shoré's campaign picture." Suggestion, we'll take that. I hope you guys are listening.
Yes, sir.
"Youth unemployment is one of the chronic issues affecting our country. What strategies do you have to address it?" Strategy is, one, to secure the country. We have security, but most importantly, our intervention policy, the, I mean, policies in the past sector alone, we employ over two million people. What, what do we mean? When we come to Nigeria, where we electrify Nigeria, by bringing in immediately twenty-four thousand megawatts of electricity, which can be done in two and a half years. And if you doubt that it can be done in two and a half years, you probably have read that Egypt just finished seventeen thousand... And if you doubt that it can be done in two and a half years, you probably have read that Egypt just finished seventeen thousand megawatts in the last two years. It didn't take any, ah, any magic to do it. It just took commitment, it took focus, it took innovation. And what was innovative about it? They combined solar, right? Combined gas, bio, mass or biogas and they combined whatever they could find that could generate electricity, including cow dung, you know, dirt on the street. And all of these projects, they embarked upon in two years, seventeen thousand megawatts of electricity. Morocco is generating over four thousand five hundred megawatts of electricity from solar energy. The same thing, yes, the same thing with Tunisia. This is no longer difficult to do. But when you don't have leaders who even understand how the rest of the world is moving along, it will be difficult for them to figure out how to do anything. Three days ago, as I was going to mention, if you go to my Facebook page, I have a video there that I just uploaded on my way here. Ah, thank you, sir. And it was about the Black House at the Muretala Mohammed International Airport that lasted for forty-five minutes. So people are arriving and they arrive there and as their bags were coming out, it was more electricity. They were using hand to carry it back across to people, you know. I mean, one is not safe to be operating at an airport in that. Secondly, it's a shame that in twenty eighteen, we cannot light off our airport to the point that we can successfully move bags on the aircraft to their owners. When I came to London before I finished immigration protocol, my bags were out. I get came to Manchester, as soon as I got out of the plane, my bags were out. Nobody's, but in Nigeria, if you arrive at the airport, it probably take two hours sometimes. Worst thing is that they can't even air condition, I mean, there's no air conditioning at the arrival. So you have to start sweating it out from there. One pilot, the pilot who was on Virgin Atlantic today, said he couldn't power one of his engines. They had four engines in the, ah, A three forty airplane. And he said something that was, you know, both annoying but, you know, also true. He said, well, I've asked him to bring an additional, because the, the airplane was hot. And he said, there's a generator that is supposed to be on the ground to power the air conditioning of the plane, while, while the plane is not, when the engines are not active. He said, I've asked him to bring an additional engine, but knowing Lagos, knowing Nigeria, he said this might take a while. And lo and behold, it took us an hour before we could take off from there because that's engine that they needed, probably it took them another thirty minutes to find it. It's, it's, it's just an impossible place. And to start to make it work, we have to find new people, new hands, fresh ideas.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
So to this question about unemployment, apart from electricity, the infrastructure that we want to bring to bear Nigeria, you know, fixing our airports, fixing the railway system, our schools, it's also going to bring about another two to three million jobs. Ah, and also the agricultural revolution that we want to bring to bear Nigeria, the diversification of the economy that we have been planning inside of our minds, will bring almost five to six million jobs right there within two years. And that's where all the young people will find work. Right now, the only job available for young people is election toggling. So everybody's getting set now for election. They are sharpening their knives and machetes and, you know, yes, and they are buying them guns and bullets. They're importing uniforms, military uniforms into the country for the election. After the election, all these young people have to wait for another four years. While they are waiting, they engage in kidnapping, armed robbery, because they have to survive somehow. So that, the country must break from this very vicious cycle of unemployment and the denigration and the degradation of its youth. And it's, it's just something that will happen when we get electricity. There's a lot of innovative young people in the country, even in the technological arena. If you know what Nigerians are doing in terms of inventions, you won't believe it. Now they have their own payment systems that, that competes favorably with Pay, ah, PayPal. You know, they, they associate Nigerian version of GoFundMe. But at the end of the day, as hard as these kids might try, they don't have electricity. They don't have, you know, they don't have broadband, the phone companies are ripping them off. You know, when people fall sick in Nigeria, they can't find hospitals to go to. You know, you want to do something, but the country is doing you in each time you try to do something. So the moment we get it right, the leadership that inspire, we get a lot of things happening. You guys will be surprised, I'm telling you, Nigeria is just waiting for that moment to turn on the switch. And the moment you reset the button and we get out of the default mode that we have been permanently in, Nigeria will become a nation that even you guys will be wondering, oh, wasn't I sitting around with Shorre last year here and things are already working?
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
And you know why? The reason why I'm very optimistic and confident that this will happen is also the way our political movement started. If anybody said to most people that after eight months, we will become the most talked about political movement in Nigeria's history, nobody will believe it. So that tells you that after next, this time, by this time next year, it would be a different situation for the country, yes. And we will still be able to come here as well. Because this time around, we will not be partying very hard, we will be shipping you guys to come and help at home.
A A C.
Take it back.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
Take it back.
Action.
And the good news is that a lot of Nigerians who are out here want to help for free. Because most of us are tired of staying here anyways, that's true. No, it's true, man. If you do a poll of how many Nigerians want to go back home, it will be almost the whole out, yes. So, no worries. Ah, and by then too, we have our own deadline, the real one, not, not the thing. Somebody asked, Nigeria has experienced a serious threat to its national security with lots of lies across the country over these few years. How do you, do your government plan to restore security in our country? I mentioned it and I've answered this question a thousand times. The reason why Nigeria is so insecure is because the security agencies don't want to secure Nigeria. Nigeria is the only country in the world where security agencies work against the security of people, yes. I said it at the time and people were like alarmed, you know, I said if I become president, a lot of generals will get fired. I don't look back, I know them personally, haven't worked as a reporter. You know, when you find a general who is building mansions at a time that people are dying in, you know, ah, in the hands of Boko Haram and kidnappers and, and hersmen. You know that they don't want the war to end, they are the ones prolonging the insurgency that you are seeing in the country. In fact, my research as a reporter showed that in every conflict that has lasted for more than two years in Nigeria, army generals or security agencies are supplying weapons directly to militants. They did it in the Niger Delta. They were shipping weapons from Kaduna to, to militants in Niger Delta region, selling them. So these are, these things are not new. When we come in, we'll get rid of all of them, there's no question about it. And bringing security agencies who are willing and patriotic to make Nigeria a safe country. But that also could include that we incentivize them, include training and include proper equipment. I, I say to, to everyone with due respect, if you get to Nigeria where police refuse to collect bribe, Nigeria will start changing from that day. When you say, look, I'm offering you bribe and he handcuffs you, because bribery is a very serious offense here, right? And people will say, look, police not a collect bribe anymore. So before you put a vehicle on the road, you have to consider whether it's roadworthy or not, whether it has insurance. And before you know it, accidents will reduce on our highways. Before you know it, even armed robbery will cease because to rob, you know that it will be difficult for you to kidnap somebody from Kaduna and then drive the person to, to worry and nobody will ask you on the road. Because the police will no longer be smiling anymore. They are doing their job, but they are well paid to do it, they have the equipment, they have the vehicles. If they can't catch up with the criminal, they can get in helicopter to follow up until the person is caught. Ladies and gentlemen, Nigeria is not big and Nigeria is not complicated. But if they want to press the panic button inside of you, they will say you that Nigeria is complicated. My response has been simple, if Nigeria is complicated as they claim, why is it so easy to steal from Nigeria? What I understand about complicated system is that it's very difficult to navigate through there. But you said something is complicated and somebody will steal one billion dollars from the place. Nothing will happen, that's not a complicated system, that's a basket case, right there. Or you say Nigeria is big, what made Nigeria big is because Nigeria is not integrated. You can hardly find thirty kilometers of highway in Nigeria that you can ride uninhibited. No, I've traveled in Nigeria, across Nigeria last few months. If you go up to twenty kilometers, you will hit a crater, you know, or a port hole or something. There will be something that is there, all the road will suddenly just end abruptly, you know, in the middle of nowhere. So it's the kind of country that they created. This is a country that the Boharis created, this is a country that the Artikus created. This is the country, the Nigeria of today is Nigeria of their dream.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
A A C.
Take it back.
Take it back.
Action.
Nigeria of their dream is Nigeria of our nightmare, yes. It is time that we create a Nigeria of our dream, which will be their own nightmare. And the reason will be their own nightmare is that they will be shocked that this is Nigeria that they have enslaved, that has broken free from them. And I say with due respect, I don't wish them bad, but I feel like if Nigeria start to be okay, some of these old cargos will start dying off one by one. Because they will have no place in a distant Nigeria. But in a Nigeria of today, that is under, they are under lockdown, they are surviving, they love it. This is Nigeria where they live forever. You see, if you look at Nigeria, there's a paradox there. Bad people live long in Nigeria, good people don't last in Nigeria. There's something wrong with a country like that. So we need to change that narrative, we need to change that paradox and create a Nigeria where every one of us with good intention can live long in it, you know. I just feel that, you know, this is possible. I, I say to people at the time that a brand-new Nigeria is possible, yes.
Yes.
It's completely possible because I was around in last ten years. I studied as Dubai became what it became, maybe in last twenty years. I left Nigeria in nineteen ninety-nine. I've never heard about Dubai when I left Nigeria in nineteen ninety-nine. I started hearing about Dubai around two thousand and five. And now it's one of the best places, I started hearing about Rwanda. Went through war, twenty years war, you go to Rwanda today, if you drop your wallet, you come back the next day, you'll meet it there. It's a, it has the cleanest city in the world. Okay, if you don't want to think about that, go to Ghana. In fact, when I did the train visitation, the, the, the bottom of the train in Yaba, we did a video and compared with Kenya, compared with South Africa and Ghana. All of them are better than us in twenty eighteen. We have not even included Ethiopia. Ethiopia, Ethiopia is building a train, I think a train line to Kenya now, that's probably going to be the best. They already have a tracity, train system. Ah, we're struggling, but guess what, which is very painful? You know, if you say Nigeria is bad and you want to fix it, the first people that will come against you are people who are, are the, who are the victims of the terrible Nigeria. Even on Facebook, the first people to defend the bad Nigeria are all these young guys who are suffering. And you're asking, is there any problem with you? What do you benefit, what do you benefit from this Nigeria that you come and defend and say that, yeah, we have train at all, half bread is better than none. Somebody will say you that Rome was not built in a day. And I answer one of them, was Rome built forever? Nigeria has been under construction for eternity.
Yes.
If Rome was built that way, we wouldn't know Rome today now. In fact, Nigeria has been around for, contrary to our own position, Nigeria has been around for a hundred years. Since nineteen, more than a hundred years. So fifteen, nineteen fifty, ah, nineteen sixty was when Nigeria was granted independence. But as a national entity, whatever you want to call it, that's around since nineteen fourteen, when the southern and northern protectorates were combined together. And so many of the infrastructure you see Nigeria today were some of the infrastructure that were created around that period. Nothing new, nothing new. Even some of our friends on Facebook who tried very hard to go and say that roads are being constructed, they can never present to you a finished road, it's the ones that are under construction that are there. You know, I say, what is wrong, why are we always under construction? In nineteen eighty-nine, we're under construction, nineteen ninety-nine, we're under construction. Twenty nineteen, we are going to go under construction. When are we going to finish Lagos in Bano Expressway? That I, I, I knew about that road, not the construction now, but the fixing of the road, it's been on for twenty years. We just trapped, we just trapped there four days ago, they still haven't been able to finish it. But when you are passing the place, you will know that nobody is doing construction. Because you will still see, you know, caterpillar, as they call it there, one single one, you know, and maybe two. And sometimes, you know, you look at the equipments very critically, you know that the equipments that are there are not for road construction, it's just for decoration. Yes, because on our way here, ah, one of our colleagues was driving, said, oh, there was nothing here in this Manchester two, two years ago. But now there are buildings everywhere, there's construction, even as we were coming here, there's construction happening at night. You know, in Nigeria, you don't see that, you just hear that contract is now what they, is a country of contractors without builders. That's the truth. Everybody just collect their contracts, collect the mobilization fee disappear, until another government shows up, they get another contract, same place. Youth particularly, university students age constitute formidable full soldiers in this election. Are you doing enough to governize them into this project? Of course, yes, ah, pro footballer. We went to E F A, about four days ago. Massive, massive attendance of our rally there, we had about three thousand people, students attend our rally. Ah, so we, we have the support of shares and we are going to visit more, more universities as we go along. But you know the, the government of the day, the moment they become too far along campus, they close down the universities until the election. They, they don't care about academics. Ah, see, what's, economy is changing fast and moving to digital era. What plans do you have to step up Nigeria to meet with other countries leading in the, leading in modernism? I just mentioned also digital production. When I mean digital production, I'm saying that if you look at the world today, the first five most valuable companies in the world are companies that are dealing in technology. But Nigeria is still, even in the past, we are still relying on oil, crude oil. Some of you must have heard the biggest controversy around our candidacy. When one day I told them that forget about oil, start thinking progressively. You are growing cannabis in Nigeria. Ah, they said, you want to be selling wee-wee. Right, this guy is crazy, you know. But while we are at it, it was as if their clivoyans came to early. Canada, about two, about a month ago legalized marijuana. Two weeks later, seventy, they need, seventy percent of what they need is not available. Imagine that we're already a player in the game, that is four billion dollars right there, just to supply Canada seventy percent of their need. You must have seen a young lady today that accosted me at the airport, that became a little controversy. She stopped me, she worked with me before, ah, on Sahara FM, when we were still, when we had the offering of radio, an online radio. And she said, I cannot believe that it's a Nigerian who is bold enough to tell the truth about the value of cannabis. She showed me a vape of can, cannabis. She said, this is, I sell it thirty-six thousand naira, just one. And the people buying it are not regular people, politicians. She says, all these bishops, politicians, pastors, doctors. She said that the people have selling this thing, yes, thirty-six thousand naira is how much it sells. One, not pastor, he said, it's kind of like a natural oil, yes. He's just taking vape of it and, you know, it comes in that, it's the kind of thing that Pokakula is trying to buy from Aurora. That's, he paid them four billion. So, but, nobody is taking progressively to know that, look, this might just be the oil that you have been looking for right there, and Nigeria has the best. They call it cannabis attire back. That particular brand that is grown in Nigeria is the best. And they started asking me, do you smoke? Of course I don't smoke, but I don't have to smoke to understand that cannabis can cure cancer. It's being used right now to, it's the best cure for epilepsy, right? But Nigeria, if a child falls down, you know, if a child is epileptic and falls down in school, they start beating the child. Yes, they'll be beating the feet of the child back to life, instead of administering what is now known as the best medicine. So, we need thinkers as well, you know, our leaders don't think and they have no capability, the memory space, you know, the operating system cannot cope with the future that we are looking for.
AAC, take it back, action. AAC, take it back, action.
Somebody asked how do we make elections, make sure elections are not rigged? You can only rig elections of people who want the elections to be rigged. You see, let me tell you, when young people are involved in an election, it's the most difficult election to rig. And we are seeing a lot of young people who are vindicated that this is their own election, because it's their future that is at stake. And if anybody is going to rig the election, I don't even want to tell the person the consequences of rigging an election that in which young people have interest. But this is not the first time they rigged election in Nigeria, and it then backfired on them. In two thousand and fifteen, the group that rigged the election, they most lost the election, that was the PDP. And in two thousand and nineteen, the group that knows, knows how to do, see and buy, which is APC, will lose this election. I have no doubt about it.
AAC, take it back, action. AAC, take it back, action.
Jose, can you tell us about the issues of the Ode of Ife's Palace? I have answered this question too many times. But the better way to answer is, is the visit of a prince's chance to Nigeria, to send you a letter. Those are the people that you want me to go and be prostrating for, they are prostrating for a prince. Kings that are prostrating for princes, you are worried about me prostrating to them. Look, this thing is simple, our future is not tied to how many people to whom we can general flit or prostrate. It's tied to those who are willing to stand the torch into the future. I have nothing against the Ode of Ife, and I've said it that that issue is past and in the past, what happened hadn't explained, it was life. And as a result, I don't want to waste my time discussing the issue. We even went back to Ife, Ille Ife, before we went to the university. We had more supporters in Ille Ife, four days ago, than we had when we visited the Ode of Ife. So, that tells you something. Uh, you say, what is the abuse about reducing exchange rates? I have talked about the exchange rate so many times. Uh, you know, the problem with the exchange rate is that we have too many exchange rates. There are about four or five of them. They have, they have exchange rates for pilgrims, they have exchange rate for armed robbers, they have exchange rate for money launderers, there's exchange rate for students. We have to harmonize all of that. But the most important thing is that we must engage in production so that we can increase the value of our currency. We can show up, the value of our currency is the only solution to this problem. Except, we are able to address that, for that of why change rates. And talking about pilgrimage, one of the things that we do as president of Nigeria is not to invest a dime in sending anybody to Etam, Metta, Nigeria.
AAC, take it back, action.
It's a shame that Zafara stays sends over a thousand, five hundred people to Metta every year, but they only have twenty-five students writing journals. Yes, that's the truth. It is, one priority is all about this. I have no problem with religion, but I hope that people will keep being private.
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Yes. What's your views about, you say, tell us about your degrees, you want to kill the other candidates? My, my answer is that if you put my degree on Artiku and, uh, Buhari, they won't be able to stand up to laughter the election. So, I have, yes, I have a WAC, no, no, I have a WASC. It's West African School Certificate. Then I have a BSC, that is the Bachelor of Science in Geography and Planning. And I have an MPK, Master's in Public Administration from all of these things, all of these degrees came from notable universities. Uh, the University of Lagos, I don't want the rest of you to go to England to feel bad. And Columbia University in New York. And I heard that our seventy-six-year-old ancestor, Buhari, is still looking for his own certificate from WHEF. And I said it at Ife, I'll repeat here, Buhari's certificate is not with WHEF. It's with Cambridge University. And they have indicated to him that anytime he's ready to collect it, he should collect it. And I'm here now in the UK, I can help you figure it out and drop it with him on my way back. The man simply did not write any high school exam, otherwise he would not be looking for a certificate where it doesn't exist. Uh, so, those are my qualifications. Very, I'm overqualified by Nigeria's standards, to be precise there. Have we finally formed, uh, a coalition because time is running out? What is your stance on LGBT? Finally, uh, you need to accuse you of something on that, the free show, please try and go to the radio station. Okay, so it's forming a coalition. The biggest coalition in Nigeria today is AAC. We call ourselves Zonsebe. We are a coalition of the disenfranchised, the abused, the violated. And all of those things that happen to Nigerians out of the mainstream. That is the coalition, the AAC serves the coalition of the willing people of Nigeria who are fighting towards remamping Nigeria with a revolution. Uh, so what is my stand on LGBT? I have said it that Nigeria has no business deciding who people sleep with in their bedrooms. Nigeria has no business sending anyone to jail simply because of their sexual choices, orientation. And it would not be the job of our governments when we have rules to construct, we have schools to build, to not be sending police, to be going to people's house, it used to be a man or a woman, you know? In a country where senators, governors are sleeping with thirteen-year-old people, which is against our own laws, and nobody is implementing and fighting there. You are, you are, you are planning to jail somebody for fourteen years, simply because of their choice in life. Everybody that has decided to exercise their rights in a way that is universally accepted, will be respected within our borders as well. It's as simple as that, I don't get involved in this argument because, as you guys know, they are always looking for excuses to say, oh, he has come again. Uh, he wants to turn Nigeria into Sodom and Gomorrah. As if Nigeria did not exist before Sodom and Gomorrah, Nigeria is today's Sodom and Gomorrah. And it's not because people are gay, it's because people are corrupts. Yes, Nigerian leaders are morally bankrupt, corrupt, and they do, in fact, most of them are actually also gay. Yes, so many of these leaders that are talking about homosexuality, they are gay. Some of them are gay, they are bisexual, they are everything. There's nothing you can think of in this world that they don't practice in Nigeria, in Nigerian leaders.
AAC, take it back, action. AAC, take it back, action.
With regards to Unis, I do not waste my time discussing individuals. We have a political party, we have issues to trash out, not people who are, who have personal opinions or differences with me. It is their fundamental right to avoid opinions that are different from mine. They can say that at the radio station, at the TV station, please, I support it. But I've checked and there's nothing concrete about those accusations. What is your view of Nigeria constitution? I've always said that Nigeria constitution is a fraudulent document created by the military. And it is not, and has never been legitimized or validated by Nigerian people. One of the things we do when we come to office is to change that constitution completely. And make it go through, and make it go through a memorial, I'm sorry, a referendum. Uh, so that it will become a legitimate document that every Nigerian can be proud of or can use to defend their rights, or whatever they think is necessary. It will be a document that will define even what they call restructuring of Nigeria. But first and foremost, that document must be of Nigerian people, by Nigerian people, and owned by the people of Nigeria. How do you tackle the problem of unemployment? We just talked about it. So, how many government positions have you had? Because Nigeria is beyond theories and ideas of paper and mouth. I have never held a government position before, because Nigeria doesn't have a government. So, the people that have been holding positions are not holding governmental positions. You guys know how governments look like, have you seen it in Nigeria? But I've heard a lot of leadership positions, including being a student leader, being an entrepreneur, being a moral global voice, being an environmentalist. And I've done so many things in the last thirty years that nobody today who is contesting for the presidency of Nigeria can boast of. That many things that I've done, even though I'm the youngest, I'm almost one of the youngest among all the contestants. Maybe I'm not the youngest, but one of the youngest. And even amongst our peers who are rubbing, we ask them a simple question. Yes, were you not here when they were fighting for June twelve, they said they were around, what did you do? Nothing. Were you not here when they removed petroleum subsidy, they said they were here? Where were you, what did you do? Nothing. But I have been part of every battle that we fought to save the soul of Nigeria.
AAC, take it back, action. AAC, take it back, action.
My question is about entertainment industry in Nigeria, so what will you do to support young, talented Nigerians who are suffering and underground to find their way into the, into their dreams and sustainable structure for those who have made their way into the industry? Well, the entertainment industry is a very, very important industry for us because that industry is what is sustaining Nigeria like they now. In fact, our entertainers are the only legitimate ambassadors of the country, anywhere you go to there. So, we do everything we can to encourage more talents to come out of Nigeria. We invest in institutions that make those things possible. We end the censorship of talents and ideas in the country. One of the things I want to end is that government agency that tells you which song is good or bad. Yeah, because there are no bad songs, as far as I know. Because people can't sing bad songs, people who don't have, who don't know how to sing, they don't make songs. The moment the song comes out is never bad. So, but also, there are financial incentives that needs to be, that we can have out of, you know, in the country for people who have ideas in the entertainment industry so that they don't die with their talents. A lot of people are out there who could have made Nigeria even a better place, there's no kind of song. Any genre of song today that you can't find in Nigeria. The Nigerian movie industry brought Nigeria to the mark of the war when Nigerian government leaders were failing Nigeria. So, everything will be done, everything will be done to sustain the, you know, the entertainment spirit of Nigeria, the entertainment industry. And this is an opportunity to call on all the people in the entertainment industry who want to see a different future, to support AAC and support our candidate job. Because a lot of them are also hanging around hoping that they can collect money from Artiku and Buhari to sing for them. A lot of people, they are not careful, those entertainers, their careers will die with this next election. But it's true, it happened during Abada's time. It took Shimo Peter a long time to recover after he signed for Abada, he's never really recovered. Yeah, so, we are watching the entertainers, and this is not a threat. We are the consumers of entertainment content. If you think they can take Nigerians for granted that they are, that is our needs, well, you will hear from Nigerians very soon. The North, uh, have enough voting strength, therefore, how do you want to carry out your campaign in that area? You just heard that our vice presidential candidate is from Jigawa State. And after we introduced him to the world, he has gone back to start working with young people in his house. What is, what is very exciting, uh, so that you know is that even the Norths, they are more interested in, in new Nigeria than most people think. Yes, they want a Nigeria where they can be free of poverty. All those Amajiris that I heard about, they want to go to real schools. Not others who are engaging in agriculture, they want to double and triple their, their production. In fact, a state in the North is the only state that is viable in Nigeria today, apart from the oil-producing states, and I think it's Kebi. They are growing rice, last year alone, Kebi made more than fifty billion naira from rice. Yes, that is northern Nigeria, they got just one state. And everybody else is waiting for oil peanuts from Abuja, anders from Abuja. So, the North is ready to return back to real agriculture. They are ready to go back to school, they are ready to have great hospitals, they are ready to have great flows, they are ready to be part of a new economy and a new future as well. And they are ready to vote out the two old cargos from the North, because Buhari is not helping any Nortana. Artiku has never helped any Nortana before. Artiku has a university in the North, no Nortana can afford to go to the university. Yes, American, uh, what, I don't know the full name of the university, ABTU. That's, no Nortana, no average Nortana can afford to go to his school. The water that he's selling from the North is natural water that's coming that is tapping and selling to the poor people of the North. So, how do you expect Nortanas to vote for such a person? So, they know these people already that they are the perpetrators of poverty. Not the alleviators of poverty, and Nortanas are ready for them. And they have embraced us, you, you have seen some of their, our clips traveling in the North on YouTube and Facebook. They have embraced us the way we've never even thought they could embrace us.
AAC, take it back. AAC, take it back.
So, you asked us about like minds, uh, that we, we have involved a lot of like minds and I don't even, I don't know where to start. But we have a lot of like-minded Nigerians within Nigeria and outside of Nigeria, who are part of the movement. This movement has grown faster than any movement that I know in a long time. Uh, that's the reason why you guys are sitting down here at this time of the night, on Friday. Uh, and you don't have any plan to go anywhere anytime soon, that tells something.
AAC.
Nobody asked me, do you believe in restructuring? Of course I do, absolutely do. But not the restructuring that don't be done by the old guards. I have said it several times, if you think Buhari is too old to be the next president of Nigeria, you should also be worried about the old people. you should also be worried about the old people who are clamoring for restructuring. The question they ask in broken English in Nigeria is, is it for their own? Or restructuring, somebody will be forty years old. What does he want to restructuring Nigeria for? When you are global, too closer to, to your grave, you should be restructuring your grave. Not, you should be restructuring the burial ground where you want to sleep for eternity. Not the Nigeria that you destroyed when you were younger. Our kind of restructuring first is going to be economic. The empowerment of Nigerian young people is the first restructuring that must happen. In fact, the empowerment is such that it's political. When young people become the president of Nigeria, become ministers, governors, then they will meet together and decide on how to restructure Nigeria. But the Nigeria that is going to be structured by a seventy year old man in Afendifere, how is it going to look like? Is it going to be digital or analog? What strategies you want to employ to revive the economy? Because we've answered this before. We always said it and I repeat it here, without electricity, forget the economy. Without security, forget the economy, without infrastructure, forget the economy. If this event was happening in Lagos and the party here was somewhere in Oduellegba. And I arrived at the airport and the time I arrived, by this time I wouldn't have been able to reach this place. And this is, this is something that is supposed to not last more than fifteen minutes driving from Lagos Airport to Oduellegba. But there's no way in Lagos we could have reached there at the same time we reached there. What is the difference? Infrastructure. We even made traffic on the way, but we didn't, I think there was an accident. Before we got there, they had cleared the accident. The road was free. If there's an accident of that nature in Lagos, not tomorrow. It's, we won't be able to pass that piece until tomorrow. It's, it's unbelievable. So to revive the economy, you need to get in the game of production. But before you can produce, you need electricity, you need infrastructure, you need security. This is, this is that simple, you know? Yes. So I'm impressed with your courage, but do you think campaign overseas will have any influence on outcome of election? Absolutely. In fact, if there's any reason why our campaign is so effective is because it has put an overseas and local dimension, the diaspora and local dimension working as a safe area for us. As well as made that, otherwise, we have no single advertisement in any TV station in Nigeria. We have no single jingle on radio, but there's nowhere you get to. People stop us on the road and say, Mr. Shureg, how is it that? I got a call from my brother in America about you. So the conversation is going on, people are calling people at home. Not those ones who are planning to impose sanctions on their families if they don't vote. It's also the diaspora that forces a lot of people to get their PVC. Yes, and a lot of diaspora people have also gone home to get their own PVCs and planning to go back home to vote as well. So it's, it's, it's infinite in terms of the value that this whole local and overseas, uh, events are taking, uh, on our hands. Other people have tried it. It's just not easy for them. Because they don't have a strategy on how to engage the diaspora. You saw Artikoo, he brought into, what happened in London, I bring them to, shut up house. In the middle of the conversation, his battery died. The transmission went off. They had to bring a Renault Mercury to come and restart his brain in the middle of the conversation. So they cannot even come to the diaspora because, look, already, we have already answered about twenty questions and I didn't open book. This one is from up here. How can Buhari do that? How can Artikoo do that? So when elected, how do you guide against being impeached by the Senate? If you don't have enough rep by the Senate? We are getting elected to leave Nigeria. I am not planning to be elected as the Senate President. And I've said it before, that if Nigeria finds a great leader, every other person will fall in line. Yes, senators, House of Rep members, they are for, Nigeria cannot be afraid of them or continue to be afraid of them. They are supposed to be working for Nigeria, Nigeria cannot be working for them perpetually. So please, don't worry about that. The moment we get to work and we are building roads, bridges, train, you know, railway lines and modern, a modern nation is being built. Forget about any Senate that is not working, people will ignore them. In fact, maybe in the middle of the whole thing, people say they don't even want a Senate anymore. Abrogate the Senate. Whatever the people want is what will become supreme and must prevail. Don't worry about them, but just so that you know, we also have candidates in AAC for senatorial positions, governmentship positions, House of Representative positions, and also State House of Assembly in the next election. We just submitted all the forms at Ynet. Uh, we have over, I think we have almost ten senators. And I asked a question the other day, that in Nigeria, do you know ten senators that are doing, that are working in the interest of Nigeria? No, you can't find ten Nigerian senators that are working in the interest of Nigeria. In fact, it's difficult to point to one senator in Nigeria that is, that is fighting for Nigerians. They are only fighting for their pocket and allowances. This thirty, thirty million. One of them even had the audacity last week to say that that thirty million naira is too small for them. Yes, yes, it was in the newspapers. And these are the people that said that thirty thousand naira is too much, is too much for, for Nigerian workers, criminals. We are students and are still at the very back of the room, very given ordinary water. I feel this is very rude and segregated like this. They said that some student at the back of the room who said that, is it here or?
No, it's not here.
It's not here? Was that a different? When do you see Nigeria in ten years and when do you see yourself in ten years? In ten years, my entire hair will be gray. That, I would have worked so hard. But, you know, in ten years as well, Nigeria would have become such a great country that all of us can be proud of. In ten years, we will remember this day nostalgia and we are part of history. Next President, what are your strategies? We are planning to boost economic growth if we eventually get there. Answer. What are your plans to boost economic growth? How do you intend to reduce unemployment? Already answered. What is your take or stand on the current minimum wage? It's not enough. Our minimum wage proposal is hundred thousand naira per month. And we have done our research and figured it out. And in fact, we should be ashamed of paying people three hundred dollars per month. When unemployed people in Turkey are taking home six hundred dollars per month. In Turkey, that, and this was announced last week. Anybody above the age of sixty-five in Turkey is entitled to take home six hundred dollars per month. In Australia, every two weeks, an unemployed person is paid six hundred dollars. Every month, they collect one thousand two hundred dollars, unemployed. So our minimum wage of even hundred thousand naira is a shameful amount of money, but it's a good starting point. And I just read on my way here, the Club Lord Gumbay said that Gumbay State, which is not an oil producing state, can afford sixty-six thousand naira minimum wage. On my way here, I just read it. Gumbay State said they can have more sixty-six thousand naira minimum. Nigeria definitely can have four hundred thousand naira minimum wage. In fact, right now, we are giving money to people who are not working and underpaid people who are working. Most Nigerian senators don't go to work more than once a week. They take home thirteen point five million naira every month. If you want to have an idea of how bad these guys are, we created a salary comparison tool on my, on our website, Shureg2019. You can go in there and compare your salary to that of a Nigerian senator. One guy who is receiving, and if you are receiving hundred thousand, it will take you seven years to make the amount of money that the senator is making per month in Nigeria. If you are collecting minimum wage of eighteen thousand, it will take you thirty something years to make the amount of money that a Nigerian senator is making per month. We have reduced this to a science. I don't know what to ask. But you have Vasa Elobor, please get a united front for Nigeria, this Triple J Bedford. Thank you, Triple J. Sir, I want you to give an outline of plans to make you part of the government. Answer this so many times. This is a government of the youth and it's going to be for young people as well. The moment we are elected into office, you will never have a chief of staff who is seventy-six years old. It's not possible. We are going to, we are going to appoint young people to mind the country. And then we'll take care of our old people, no doubt about it. They, they deserve our support and care. Yes, we will socialize social security. What is the possibility of future coalition with other political parties? Open, in fact, we are attending a meeting next week for, to explore those possibilities. But that will not stop our own, because we are already a coalition of the willing. Going by the way Nigeria government has been run, how do you intend to affect change or changes through the election next year? How do you intend to cover all forms of my practices using cases of Oshun and Ekiti, elected as a case study? Again, we are mobilizing people to become conscious, educated and prepared to confront, see and buy, this is what happened in Oshun and Ekiti. I say it and I repeat it here. The party that won the election in Ekiti in two thousand and fourteen did not win the presidential election. That's the PDP. So I'm making a prediction to you that the party that won Ekiti and Oshun, which is APC this year, true fraud, will not win the presidential election next year. Our party will win the election next year. Politics is like going to war and these strategies. What are your strategies to create and demoralize the act of bringing up elections? I'll say here that I've spoken a lot about this, but something is important to tell you for those who are asking the same question. Nobody worth a shot will reveal all his strategies at once in advance. So some of the strategies we'll keep to our chest. If we don't win this coming election, what would be your next plan towards the realization of a better Nigeria? We need a revolution, do you agree with this? Yes, we need a revolution. Somebody asked me, are you running for election now or are we doing a revolution? I said, whichever one comes first. Miss Ali, please sir, could you contact Mombiya Starboard upon their to provide support and advice for a political campaign? I think I've heard about that before. It's a very interesting question. Religion, are you going to ban the use of generator in Nigeria? A moment we provide electricity generator will ban itself. How are you going to ensure that history is part of the curriculum in schools? Uh, they say our youths are very ignorant. You only need to listen to them on social media to understand this. Artikoo was implicated in money laundering in twenty ten by a senate committee in the US. Yes, some youths are still campaigning for it. Well, that's the reason we should have been teaching history. Uh, but the people who are advocating actually know history. But they decide to ignore it because of their own selfish interests. There are some people who are working for Artikoo who are professionals. You cannot tell me that a Nigerian professor does know history. They know history, but they are manipulating history. But history will not be kind to them. Religion is one of the problems holding Nigeria back. Yes, it is a very sensitive topic. How do you plan to tackle this influence, changing belief? Accidents happen, people start praying not to be involved, but nobody talks about solving the cost of accidents. It's true, religious is a very, very sensitive topic in Nigeria. But you know, we have been dealing with topics since we started campaigning as well. Because we are campaigning religious as well. Uh, but the fact is that, look, and I'm saying this to those of you who are watching on this. If you live Nigeria and you live outside of Nigeria, just for one year and you're still going to church, you know that even your prayer points are different. Because in the Nigerian church on Sunday, you have to go and pray to God to provide transformers for your neighborhood or for neighbor to bring light. But when you travel to places like Manchester, your prayer point is, how do I pay my electricity bill? Somebody said, I saw a video of you at the airport with officials trying to extort you. That's simply experience too. What will you do to clean up corruption at the airport? Technology will do it. So look, you use me as an example. They used to extort, they used to ask me for money, they never extol me, I don't give. Uh, so I keep recording them and now I've reached a point where if they see me and another guy look at camera, they cry, wow. Keep your secret camera, where they ask you for money. If everybody started uploading their experience, they will not do it again because they have families, you know? They have, and they get fired, the moment it becomes public, they lose their job. So just, your cell phone is most powerful to just set it off. Okay, how it be now? Do you have something for us? No, I don't have anything for you. Why don't you have something for us? Because you are not supposed to be begging people who are traveling abroad. And if anything happens after that, when you are done, just upload it on YouTube or on Facebook. It, that's it. Your career don't finish with that. As a teacher in the UK, it amazes me how the curriculum changes every few years to move with the trend and development. What plans do you have for the current outdated? And I'm sure you are talking about outdated curriculum in Nigeria. It can't be applied to today. Let me tell you, my small student, a friend of mine, said, fast very well in Nigeria, I think he had the first class, went to the US and he tried to teach in a US, US college. He think he did chemical engineering, but when he left Nigeria, he was still doing IU Park. You guys know IU Park, right? When he go to the US, students were teaching him, his students. So it's just to show to you the very, very urgent necessity to redo our educational curriculum. It's, it's, it's not only outdated, it's obsolete and a cake. I'm often a teacher, I taught for eight years in the US. And I tell you, Nigeria till tomorrow, the curriculum is still dependent on cramming and doing final exams. Whereas other schools around the world are more interested in what you learn in class, how you participate and how you attend classes. That's why I have with Nigerian students, instead of reading their books, they'll be looking for Babalau to give them a pen to hold in the pocket. Nobody does that anymore. A lot of things, we A lot of things, we need to change a lot of things, ladies and gentlemen, about Nigeria. It has to start with the leadership. You see, you cannot change the curriculum of education when the leader of the country is not educated. That is the truth. You must have a level of education that will help you understand how the world is changing. We don't have those kind of leaders today in Nigeria, unfortunately. Part of your strategy focus is infrastructure. Which infrastructure we take priority once we are elected? This one even did multiple choice for me. Power, energy, water, wastewater, railway, light rail, wireless technology, broadband, drainage, flood defense. Well, with power, energy, one. Railway, light rail, two. Wireless technology, broadband technology, definitely. Drainage, sanitation and all the drift, definitely. Water and wastewater is for me sanitation. So all of the above. Talk about corruption, how do you hope to stop it when you get into power within the higher chamber? In terms of education, what are the strategies you hope to put into destruction? What will you do to equate Nigeria's education with that of the United Kingdom? Thanks, Ojugo, Peter. So corruption, there's no big deal about corruption in fact. Corruption is easier to fight as long as the leadership is not corrupt. With technology, I use the example of Nigerian workforce for example. Every year, Nigeria is always purging itself of ghost workers. But with technology, do you need to be purging yourself of ghost workers? It's just needs at the door or the entrance to the office. Finger print technology or retina technology is, exists already in banks in Nigeria. So everybody that is coming to work, that is officially a worker there, we just use their fingerprint to enter the office. At the end of the week, you know who came to work and who didn't go to work. That helps to fill out the ghost workers. But they would never do that because they are sharing the money with themselves at the top. So there's a lot of things technology can do this. You know, in procurement, for example, people can bid for contracts without physically being around to see officials. Because those evil interaction with civil servants in Nigeria is 50% of our corruption. How to go and see a guy at the top? You know, let's bid somewhere. But if you eliminate the interaction or for instance, if the university needs computer, do they need a contractor to go and buy computers? This is a matter of obviously it on Amazon or eBay. You may deliver directly to the university, you share it to remember. But you see now openly to bidding. Where you can go to office lunch that cross from. In fact, the university should be selling computer to the public. In the US, I buy my, I buy my own laptop from my university where I teach. What the University of Lagos today, if they need computer, they will go and give it to a contractor. Then the contractor will go and buy the computer and then they will go and buy fake computer. In fact, the contractor may not even know what specs they need. That's the problem in Nigeria. So if I tell you eliminate all the middlemen and all these means of engaging in corruption, corruption will be wiped out. And we have a brand new system. Thank you. I've answered more questions than there are pieces of food in this house. So, and you know, I've been traveling all day and it's about 11 o'clock here. I guarantee you I have stamina to stand here till tomorrow morning. But I've been advised to take it easy so that you can do proper fundraising, which is why you guys are here. And I've just counted, out of all your questions, you only have seven left. Yes. So we'll just take a short break from answering questions. And I can eat too, right? I just have looked at the table, I haven't seen snacks like before in a bar, the table. Well, thank you, uh, MC, I can, we can take over for now. Thank you so much, everyone, for your time. Take it back. Can I hear you one more time? Take it back. Thank you, my dear sir.
Thank you very much. AAC. Take it back. Now, who was excited, listening to all of the answers to those questions? Who was excited? Come on, you can show me a little bit more excited. Who's looking forward to Nigeria that actually works? In Nigeria, you can enter Nigeria from the airport to air conditioning and you can walk through without anybody asking you for anything. Your luggage comes on time, your convey belt's not broken. And you can actually take a taxi just by, just by leaving the airport. You can take a taxi without fear that the person's gonna rob you before you reach your destination. You can leave the airport place without people sticking guns into your car. Who is looking forward to Nigeria like that? And Nigeria the difference. Nigeria the change. And Nigeria they're at the forefront of technology. And Nigeria they're at the forefront of information. Who's looking forward to Nigeria like that? I can hear you all, who is looking forward? Right, okay, so AAC. Okay, in order to take it back, ladies and gentlemen, you all are important to this process. You heard from the man himself that it's the, it's the influence that we in diaspora are having on the people in Nigeria. The average Nigeria, an average Nigerian, yes, they have the internet where they can charge their phones, if they're hungry tonight. They've got the internet, they can see the posters around, but a lot of people don't take time. I mean, people seeing the social media clips when they, when they do vox pops on the street and they ask Nigerians questions. Have you heard some of the answers they give? Have you heard some of the answers they give? Right, so average Nigerians are not really that well informed, are they? And they rely on the information that we give them in diaspora. So we have the power. AAC. AAC. Take it back. Okay, so the action comes from you, ladies and gentlemen. The action comes from every single person in this room. You see, you don't realize that you are actually more powerful than you thought before you walked into this room this evening. You have the power to influence several Nigerians in Nigeria just by you making telephone calls and talking to your people. Just by you uploading stuff on your social media, because you know your people in Nigeria see this, don't they? And just by you saying to them, if you don't vote for him, I'm not going to save any money next one. Simple. So you have the power all to do, to make this change happen. So ladies and gentlemen, it's now time for us to dig deep into our pockets in order for this action to start taking place. Because it only by more people's hands to influence that fever, that bottom line fever, I think that will be able to make this dream a reality. I am seriously looking forward to going to Nigeria without a hitch. But right now, when I think about going to Nigeria, a million and one questions pop up. So ladies and gentlemen, we are going to start this evening's fundraising. I have a few things that I would love us to, to bid for. I have a few things that I would love us to bid for. But um, thank you very much to the people who have already started the process this evening. Can I have a round of applause again for the wonderful people who started the process? Our VIPs who are sat on the high table, we appreciate you. By the way, ladies and gentlemen, how does it feel to be up there? How does it feel to be sitting next to the presidential, the president of Nigeria in 2019? Does it feel good? Wonderful, wonderful, right. Ladies and gentlemen, you all who are sitting here also, I have a treat for you. How would you like it if in 2019, when our aspirant, Mr. Shoray, actually wins the election and in 2019, you are his special guest at the inauguration ceremony in Nigeria? How would you like that? Oh, I can hear a few wows. Think of it, just picture it, just picture it. How would you like that, ladies and gentlemen? Wow, right. Who would love to fly all the way to Nigeria? I don't know if you choose to go business class, first class and be picked up from the airport in a lovely vehicle of some kind and be taken to the location and to be ushered in. You know in Nigeria, you know how they do protocol. They're very good at protocol, aren't they? Very, very good at protocol, yes sir, yes sir, yes sir. Especially when they know you've come from, from UK, yes sir, yes sir. Bowing and loing and everything, take your bags. And you are placed at the front, right at the front, as a special guest of the president. Ladies and gentlemen, I am giving you the opportunity to bid for one of these very sought after positions. So we shall start the bidding. For the first ticket, because I have a certain number of these tickets for 2019. So we'll start the bidding for the first one at 200 pounds. Don't all rush at once now. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, who would like to be there? 2019 as a special guest to the president in Nigeria. Come on, ladies and gentlemen, starting at 200 pounds. 200 pounds, over here. So, what's your name?
Adi.
Okay, Mr. Adi, you can see yourself sitting there next to the, well, looking probably face on the head because you're probably sitting next to him there. In Nigeria next year, you can see yourself there. I can see you there too. At 200 pounds, anybody willing to go higher than that? So was that, that was the, was that, you're going higher than 200? I saw, I saw, did everybody see that?
Yeah.
I saw that. You want to go higher than 200? Ah, here before you, like, don't worry. Anybody going higher than 200? Higher than 200? Any takers higher than 200? Come on, ladies and gentlemen, we have to dig deep. In order to take action, we have to take action with our money. Only with our money can the action be taken. Do we have higher than 200? Going once at 200. Do we have anybody higher than 200? See yourself in Nigeria, 2019, special guest of the president. 2019, 200, anybody higher than 200? Going twice at 200 and go a little bit further, just a little bit further than 200, anybody? Okay, at 200 pounds, can we give a round of applause, please, to Mr. Adi? 200 pounds. You can see my day sister over there and she will be able to take that from you. Okay. AAC. Oh, you've gone quiet now. Ladies and gentlemen, is that food going down too well? AAC. Take it back. Okay, I would like to actually acknowledge the presence of a great woman by the name of Madam Tawa Oueye as she the deputy woman leader of AAC UK. Please give her a round of applause. Can you stand up, please? Oh, there she is, look up, please, for that lady. Please give her a round of applause. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, the next item on our list for auctioning tonight, I have a calendar, an AAC calendar. And seeing as you're all groundbreaking people here tonight, you can feature on that calendar for, I've got 12 spots, January to December. Just tell me any amount that you'll pay and you would feature on that calendar for AAC. And it's going to go viral, remember, it's going all over the world. You and your family or anything that you want to submit will be on that calendar and it'll be a piece of history. So you can have any spot from January to December. You can break, you can tell me any amount that you want to take for that. How much could January go for? Let's start with January. Anybody shout out any amount for January? Do you understand what we're doing here? It's a calendar for AAC. It's going to be going everywhere across the country, across the world. You can have your picture in there and it's a piece of history. It's something that will remain forever. You can have your picture in there, starting from January. Any takers for January, any amount? Just tell me any amount that you'll pay for January. Yes? We've got 100 pounds here for Madam Tawa. 100 pounds for January. AAC, AAC, 200 pounds. Thank you very much. Do we have March? Anyone in the room for March? March, 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 March. Marching towards the change for Nigeria. Anyone for March? Do people prefer different months? Anybody want to choose their month? April for anybody? April? March, okay. Here we have Madam Tawa Roberts, 50 pounds for March. April? April? Anybody born in April that wants to feature in April? But two people in April, do you mind? You can have April and May. What was it, April? It also has to be April. Okay, so how much would you like to give for April? We have 200 pounds for April, what's your namesake? Ifa Inraya, 200 pounds for April. For May. What was your namesake? Mr. Patrick is giving 50 pounds for May. We have June? We have 100 pounds for June, what's your name? Ms. Corridie, 100 pounds for June. Okay, so we have May, okay. We have another 100 pounds for May. Mr. Biopolis, 100 pounds for May, 150 pounds for May. Mr. Biopolis, Mr. Biopolis, 100 pounds for May. And 50 pounds from... You're not together? I see friends. Okay, so... Right, okay, so you are willing to pay 100 pounds for May. Could you choose another month? Okay, that's fine, so... Okay, Mr. Patrick has made the 50 pounds. Mrs. Goflas will take another month. Who's recording for me?
You guys doing this, can we take your money now because we have card machine in the building?
We have a card machine, we have an ATM machine in the building, ladies and gentlemen. We have, I've only just found out. We have an ATF in the building. Come on, we have an ATM in the building. I'm sure you can withdraw up to 900 pounds to use your business owners, I believe. So we have an ATM. So we have May accounted for. June, we have by Ms. Corridie. July. July. Okay, can I please have a round of applause for these two gentlemen who have just donated £250? AAC? Take it back? They're putting their money where the action is. They want to see action in Nigeria. So they have donated £250. July, I have July. July. Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, we've actually got a... I think they call it a PRS in Nigeria, don't they? It's a PRS system, a card machine, and you can actually swipe a card and make it easier than going to the cash point. So we've got a cash point in the building, and we've got a card machine at the back there, so you can just make your payment by card. I've also got this lovely, beautiful lady here, Dr. Kiket. Please, round the box with Dr. Kiket, and she's carrying this lovely box. So if you have cash, you can put it in here also. July, July, July. Anybody would love to feature for July? Would you like to feature, ma'am? Would you like to feature for July?
Oh, sure, right now. I wanted you to go a bit further, because I want to be going beyond my two years of...
Oh, so what month is it? So carry on, okay. July. Come on, all the queens are born in July. Any lovely ladies or gentlemen who are born in July would love to feature for Ju... Over here. Okay, so, so how much would you like to donate? We have Mr. Pedro here, who would like £50 for the month of July. Mr. Pedro, £50 for July, can we please give him a round of applause? Okay, also, I have another donation from Miss Divine. Mrs. Divine, and she's donated £100, ladies and gentlemen, please. Okay, August. August. Comrade Joe, are you an August baby? Are you keeping your card? Oh, my. Okay, for the VIP table, can I have the PRS system? The cash?
We need to be charging it at the same time, so...
The card machine? If you just give me your PIN number, I'll do that, it's fine. Oh, I'm sure I could do that, so you're here, definitely. Are you sure? Ladies and gentlemen, please, can I round the box for this handsome man, big diamond? And he's the son of Comrade Joe. Okay, can we have a round of applause for Comrade Joe? He's donated £200 for August. You should have given me your card, though. Use the August as well, if you can go better than £200. You can go higher than £200. All right, there's other opportunities, there's other opportunities. Other opportunities. Okay, so we've done August. September. September. Any four babies? Four more, four, September. September. September? Let me just remind this lovely lady here. September. September. Oh, right, yes, September, okay.
On behalf of my two daughters, who are in September 6, I will put in £200.
Oh, no, seriously? Carry on another round of applause for this lovely lady, please, ladies and gentlemen, please. September has been done. October. October. Any takers for October? October, October. October, October. Any takers for October? Is it October you wanted to? Right, now the second. If you... let me think. The problem is, what I'm going to track you? GPS, GPS scanner, I'll take your telephone number, I'll need your wife's telephone number, I need your children's, I need your mom's telephone number, I need your dad's telephone, everybody's telephone numbers. No problem, that's fine, that's absolutely fine. So what, we're doing that for October? And how much would that be? £50 for October, ladies and gentlemen. Any other takers on October? Okay, November, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we have £50 for November, ladies and gentlemen. And we have arrived at December, so quick. We have £250 for December, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, Dr. Kiket, where's Dr. Kiket? Okay, thank you. Uh, what was our bid for January? It was £100. And it's been paid already. All of them have been paid. What's January? What's January? We've got everybody. January was the same amount of money as yours, but I have other items that you can bid for on the auction. Okay, we've got a challenge for the January post. Where's the January person? Where's the January person? Okay, so there's a challenge for your spot for January. And how much are you willing to... So we want... £200 for January.
Do you wanna go higher? £250?
Oh, go £250. So we're going for £250 now for January. Right, £300 now for January. £350 for January.
Okay, £350, she got it.
£400.
£400. £400. £450. £450 for January. £500. Six hundred. We're at £600 for January. And the cash is on the table.
£700.
It's £700? Are we saying £700 over here?
£700?
£700 over here.
£720.
£720. £750.
£751.
£751 pounds for January. £751 going once?
£720.
No, £751.
£751, sorry. So make that... Round you up.
To what? £800. We're on £800. £800 going once? Going twice? And it's sold, £800. That's what I'm talking, action, action. We wanna see the change. Who took April? Who goes on April? Over here. Does somebody want to challenge April? Anybody want to challenge April? Because I'm going to make more money for AAC to make sure Nigeria has a future that I would be proud to tell my children. We're going to Nigeria. And they'll say, "Yeah, mommy, I can't wait." But at the moment, it's not like that. I heard a testimony today of a nine-year-old child who went to the Nigerian High Commission in London. And as usual, who's been to the Nigerian High Commission? Please put your hands up, who's been? Every time you've been to the Nigerian High Commission, who's witnessed fights there? Every time, who's witnessed fights? Who's witnessed disorganization? Who's witnessed frustration? Not just at the High Commission. Imagine when you get to Nigeria. So the child saw the fights, saw the disorganization, saw the frustration, saw the fact that something that was supposed to happen within a day, they had to stay in London for three days in order to sort something out that should have happened within a few hours. And that child said, "Mommy, if Nigeria is gonna be like that, then I don't want to go." And that child has never been to Nigeria before. So I think that's a really sad thing for our children to say, oh, they don't want to go. But how are we supposed to keep our legacy alive if our children are not interested in their country? And they see this country, which does not support anything to do with our children, ladies and gentlemen. And I lie when I say that this country does not support our children, our African Nigerian children. This country does not support our children. They train their children, but they tell us not to train our children in this country. So we need to build our country in order for our children to be able to enjoy their legacy. So that's what we need to do, ladies and gentlemen. So ladies and gentlemen, no challenge for April? Are any, are all the other months safe, secure? Any challenge for May? Any challenge for June? Or July, who goes December? December, £250. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, at the end of this evening, I'm sure some of you might want to take some pictures with our... With our president in the picture. Some of you might want to take pictures. And you all know he's been traveling for many hours, don't you? And you know he's been traveling, bloated all around the world. So he's quite tired, and he doesn't want to sleep. So I'm gonna limit the amount of pictures we're taking this evening. And you can pay for a picture. What will the AAC? AAC? Take it back? Right, so action. You can pay for the picture. And he's only going to take the pictures that have been paid for. Any other photobombing or selfies or anything will be dealt with by this lovely gentleman over here. So... And I told you, they don't play. They didn't even let me through, can you imagine? See, he's not even smiling. So... Picture with our future president. Any takers? Who wants a picture this night? Okay, over here, how much, how much are you willing to take? £100?
AAC? AAC?
Action, that's what I'm talking about. Is that cash or person? Okay, anybody else? Picture with our president.
He's number one for pictures, can we have someone to take it?
Over here?
Number one to take picture, he's going to pay.
How much, sir, how much are you willing? £50? Yes, if she can. Thank you. Can I have a round of applause for these gentlemen, please? Oh, hold on, hold on, ladies. Sorry, did you say what's... Any more pictures with our president? Any more pictures, oh, yes, anybody else? Any more pictures with that over here? Okay, who's next for a picture with our president, okay, sir? £100 for this lovely gentleman? Please, come on, ladies and gentlemen, if you want to, £100. Thank you very much. Action, action. AAC? Take it back? Okay. Anybody else willing to take a picture? Okay, well... I hope I can drive myself here. Can you just maybe one second, sir, over here? Okay, here we have a round of applause for this lovely gentleman here. He's got the donation of £200. Tell everybody your name.
My name is Abi.
Okay, I have, I need everybody to please make a lot of noise for this student, Abi. Because he is sowing into the future with his donation. Do you understand, in this country, students are not really on March? Do you realize that? So he's putting what he has into this campaign because he believes that his future is in this campaign and in Nigeria. So thank you very much, Abi. Thank you, Abi. Okay, and Abi, by the way, you see that picture? Twitter? Instagram? Facebook? All of the above? Snapchat? Snapchat? Snapchats? 24/7? Until this camp 2019 is over. Every day, upload that picture. Any more pictures with our president? Any more pictures with our president? Over here, we have, over here. Can we have a round of applause for this gentleman here, please? We have a donation. A donation here for a picture with our president. Anybody else? Anybody else? Come on, ladies and gentlemen, these pictures are well sought after. Remember, when he's the president of Nigeria, you will be able to bring out this picture. Okay, Mrs Devine, with her £100 is taking a picture. Can we have a round of applause, please, for Mrs Devine? Doctor Kike, can you please have Mrs Devine's being down for a picture? She's paid her £100. She's over there, she's paid her £100, thank you. Over here. This beautiful queen. Okay, we have Mrs Falake Adenaya, she's a student. Can we please give her a big round of applause? Again, I must reiterate that students in this country, it's hard. It's not easy being a student because the little money you got, it's gonna go far. And you've still gotta use your brain to study and you're still thinking about how you're gonna pay the bills and how you're gonna take time to work and how you're gonna do everything. So please, we have a meeting down for Mrs Falake. Any other pictures with the president to be? Any other pictures? Any other pictures? Ladies and gentlemen, anybody else willing to take a picture? For donation? Any other pictures? Ladies and gentlemen? Okay, the next item, oh, over here, over here for some pictures. Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Akeem. He's ever so generous because he donated £8.20 on top of the £200 for a picture with the president. Please give a round of applause. Any more pictures with our president, sir? Okay, we've got Mrs Adiola, who's also paying for a picture with the president. Please give a round of applause. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, another piece of history for you to have your hands on this night. I'm going to ask our presidential aspirants to sign one of these beautiful T-shirts as modeled by this lovely gentleman here and this lovely lady. He's gonna sign the back of it in very beautiful big signature. So you can own that and it will be worth money in the future. So. So, take a thinking cap on how much you would like to pay for that piece of history that will be made this night. And the people who have paid for pictures, would you please make your way over to this side here? Because we're gonna take the pictures to this place over here now, please. If you've paid for your picture... We've got the list of all the people. Please, can you make your way over to this side? I will take our pictures. So remember, you'll be getting the pictures as a soft copy so you can use it for social media purposes. And you'll get a hard copy also, I believe. Kind of the pictures are not taken. I'll get my two on there. Okay, any more pictures for the president? You'll see the pictures, huh? Any cost that you can levy. Okay, so. Okay, yes. Hold on, sir, what's going on? How much is anybody willing to pay for the signed T-shirt by the president this night? You get your T-shirt and you get it signed, starting from £25 at that. Your T-shirt with a signature, big ball signature at the back. Anybody at £25? £25 for a signed T-shirt? £25? £25 with a signed T-shirt? Signed T-shirt? Signed T-shirt? Your T, you haven't got your T-shirt, but you might as well have yours with a signature on the back. So this is especially one of AAC. Okay, so Madame Tavas having a signed T-shirt at £25. I still have pictures being paid for. I still have pictures being paid for, Doctor Kike. So can you please help me with this lovely lady over here? She's paying for a picture, please.
Mrs Kelly Otton? Then the last person is Mrs Adiola. Mr Adiola, anyone? Any other person for picture, please? Has any other person paid for picture?
We have these two gentlemen, £8.50.
I'll go, I'll go.
Okay, they wanna go together.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, you're gonna get hard copies of the pictures. So obviously, we'll send you a soft copy and a hard copy. What I'm going to need you to do is to contact the office, the Take It Back Office. We have the details. We have the details for Manchester, for the Manchester Take It Back Office. If you contact them, they'll send you your hard copy photo and they'll send you the soft copy on your email. Actually, you all put your email addresses down, didn't you? So we'll just send them to your email addresses. Is that okay? Let me see, I'm just trying to see if the information is on here.
Any more coming?
Yes, please, I have a list now. Comrade Patrick? No, Comrade Robert? Comrade Isaac? Comrade Isaac? Comrade Kristen, she be getting ready? Comrade Kristen, you have to now. You have to, please, go for it.
Can you move them back, guys? Can you move them back?
Comrade Kristen, please go for it. We need to go.
Excuse me, are they together?
Can you all move back for us?
Comrade Patrick? Comrade Shupa, that's the last one. Comrade Shupa, get ready.
Sir, oh.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. Can I ask you, please have a seat in the take your pictures place? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please, if you've taken your pictures, please can you have your seats? Please. Just so we can do this in an orderly fashion. Please have your seats, we're not done yet. We will be done in the next few minutes, but we're not done yet. So please have your seats if you've taken your pictures. Of course, it's VIP table, you will be taking your pictures. VIPs. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please can I ask for everybody to have a seat for me, please?
Okay, fine. Well, and are you taking pictures? Okay, let him take a picture, no problem. Just wait.
Please have a seat, please.
Let's do this orderly, let's just do this orderly.
Go through the back.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that's standing here. Have we all taken pictures? Have you all taken our pictures? All the shooters, did you guys pay? Okay, is everybody who paid for the picture, you taking your pictures? And everybody who paid for their picture, taking their picture? Okay. Can everybody please have a seat? Ladies and gentlemen, please can you have a seat? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, please have a seat. Have a seat, have a seat for me, just for one moment, please. Um, I'd just like to acknowledge.
Where? Hang on, this guy is asking for, anybody seen a phone? Anybody seen a phone? What phone? His phone?
Okay, the organisers of this programme come and take a picture now, please. All the organisers, come and take a picture. Can I, all the organisers of this nice event, the organisers of the programme, please take a picture, please?